Do a no-show?
Well, I knew you wouldn't because you don't do that kind of stuff. And I asked her if she heard from you about coming and she said no.
Yeah. Let me give my soap order.
Did anybody make any change with those minutes?
Obviously he does.
You got any problems with accepting the minutes?
Oh, new book.
Yes, I tried to.
Nice.
You said, well, it can't be deleted yesterday or you're going to do it. We don't have to. Brian said, don't go to delete that. And now Daniel and I can all take that and it's the last four seconds. He said, well, try it and yes, Brian, do it. And wait, I see so we're all out. And it wasn't right. You know, I didn't question it to see. Okay, one more discussion. Can we get something like this? A man in a car, he got in the door, right?
Yeah.
Can we request this?
No, she sent it to us because she did a records request.
So...
That's from the attorney for Josh.
Well, we're allowed to. Data says evidence isn't part of the hearing.
It wasn't part of the hearing.
We can't use it as part of what's taken.
But she's submitting additional evidence.
We can't. They're gonna, we can't do it.
Well, we should because the, um, if you read this.
Yeah, it doesn't work on his favor or something.
No, it really doesn't.
But...
Oh, I didn't know that. Did you get an email on it or just run? I didn't...
No. Who sent this?
A couple men in cars.
Yeah, from here.
Uh... From?
Yep.
Nicole Mottiti. Now, who is Nicole Mottiti?
Nicole Mottiti, Chris and Trent.
Those, those are the matters to be continued to twelve six. That's good, no. Fifty-three Raymond Point Road. Why is that?
Wow, difference for the, oh, the women with the dogs. Yeah.
Oh, you know what? Is that the new house?
That's correct.
That's correct. The dog. Yeah. The cattle.
Twenty-two Makata Boulevard wants a continuance to Cornerstone and Oak. We got a regotment at Wood Street. They never came in front of us at Wood Street.
Cornerstone is continuing.
Why are they not here?
Check, 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 check. I think Brian's gonna know a few things first.
Okay, now, so the cornerstone of those doors. They were in Wood Street. They never came in front of us. Wood Street, I always have them. They're always in the car. I don't do them. Yes. Wood Street, same guy, both in the road with us.
I don't understand that.
How do you still go both in the road?
A lot of people call them. Yeah, they're on. Oh, we know that.
Oh, all right. But you have a mic and you're getting a call from me.
Just because I was...
Oh.
Of course, have a patient, IT guy. You understand that they want to... This is all, not Marietta. You're part of Marietta.
I gotta tell everybody to take a seat.
Maybe not, um, and then we'll go.
Yes. The rule says on the plan, there's more than a second.
I'm telling you.
Bailey, who is Bailey?
Is Astor Lane, that, no, right?
I think so.
No. Those are the canceled, right?
Olivera.
Raymond Point.
You want to go through this one here and you'll see it.
Oh, this goes with September.
It says, uh, alter the number one. I've never done it.
There'd be better ways than these jackets. They're always a mess.
Do you know that this goes with September?
No.
I had, uh, two. Um, but the one thing, one of the packages for me is not have any, um...
Which one was that?
I just don't like it.
It might have been September.
Okay.
No, that one's happened. I don't think you need to worry about it.
No, I'm not gonna worry about it. I just need to know.
Oh, Marietta, really, no.
Okay. At this time here, I'd like to call the Coventry zoning board to order. Uh, for fire reasons, legal reasons, we have, how many seats here, Russ?
Hundred eighty-six.
Hundred eighty-six. We do have a hundred and eighty-six people here. I'm gonna ask everybody to take a seat. But also at this time here, as you can see, the matters that were requested to be continued to twelve, six, seventeen. Uh, at this time here, uh, I'm gonna have the secretary please take a roll call.
Bob Crowe?
Yeah?
Here. Here.
Here.
Yeah.
Okay, let the record reflect, we have a full board. All right. I'm gonna jump over the agenda to make this a little smoother tonight. Do I have the applicant for fifty-three Raymond's Point Road?
Uh, Mr. Chair, the applicant for fifty-three Raymond's Point, he requests...
I have.
That's what, um, okay.
If it pleases the board, uh, proper notices weren't set out, sent out on the, for this meeting. So I'm re-noticing, uh, and I'd like to move to December sixth.
December sixth, okay. At this time here, I'd like to have a, a vote from the board that we continue this to...
Second.
Uh, December sixth, two thousand and seventeen. I have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. All right, so anybody here for fifty...
Thank you.
Three Raymond's Point that will not be held until twelve, six, seventeen. Okay, my next one is twenty-two Makata Boulevard, Cornerstone and Oak. Yes, uh, do I have the attorney here for that?
Yes, Thomas Cronin, representing the applicant. We've requested a continuance as, uh, we have been unable to finalize the plans and request a continuance to December sixth.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a seconded. All those in favor say aye, go to continuance.
Aye.
To, uh, December sixth, two thousand and seventeen. I have ayes, do I have a nay? Ayes have it.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, John. Okay, my next one is to Astor Lane. Uh... I have the attorney here.
You're a busy man.
Okay.
Thomas Cronin for the applicant. I apologize, Mr. Crowe, I was retained today. Uh, there was, there was not a favorable reception to this plan at the, uh, planning board. And, uh, we're gonna take an old look at that and, uh, we ask for a continuance to allow time to do that.
All right, so you're going back to the planning board?
Yes.
Okay, so that'd be the correct procedure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion on this? To continue this to...
I'll second.
Denise made the motion, John seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Okay, the next one is...
Town Farm Road, oh, the shooting range.
All right, is the attorney here for that?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Nicholas Goodier on behalf of the applicant. For, uh, for an issue relative to notice, we've requested a continuance as well.
We've requested a continuance as well.
As, as with the Department of Planning, as we went to, we ran across through, you could have noted, uh, late back evening and, uh, called November fifty-eighth. Let me know that, uh, for one reason or another, whether it was an error on the department's fault or on the absentee's fault, we can't tell. But, uh, apparently about ten people, two have gotten the notice, um, on this project, uh, did not get noticed. So, uh, we do ask, and the applicant really, uh, tried a lot to, uh, do it.
Okay, I understand a lot of people are here for this and I'm glad to see the turnout. Uh, unfortunately, uh, the board will vote tonight whether we wish to have this, uh, but it's required because notice is required to everybody, uh, within the proper procedure. So at this time, do I have a motion to continue this December twelfth? John's made a motion and Russ is seconding. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the aye, uh, nays? No nays, ayes have it. So, if anybody is here for the shooting range, that application will be heard December sixth, two thousand and seventeen. That's the first Wednesday in December. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, W E D Coventry, seven LLC, Cow's Trail Solar Farm. Is the applicant here for that?
Yes, Nicholas Goodier here tonight on behalf of the applicant as well.
Okay, so you request a continuance on that?
Yes, similar request. Uh, this is...
This discussion with the department as well, uh, as the members of the board may or may not have heard, this is for the planning commission last week for review of master plan. The planning commission did not complete their review, uh, requirement for coming to zoning is conditional approval of master plan. Don't ask that to give you, uh, the matter needs to be continued over that meeting to allow the planning commission to...
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we continue that matter till next month.
I'll second that.
Denise has made a motion to continue it to next month. John says second to that. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. So, that application will also be continued to next month. December twel-, uh, December sixth, two thousand and seventeen.
Come on now.
So if anybody is here for that, that will not be heard tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, now that I got the place kinda reorganized, I will request that anybody standing will have to take a seat. Or else we will not be able to have the meeting because it will not qualify for the, uh, fire exits. Our fire exits are to the rear, the exits that are my rear take you into the building. So the only fire exits are to the rear. And, uh, I will require seating by everybody. And the rear, and the last person on, I'm gonna ask you to close the doors. Okay, uh... Okay, at this time here, we have a work session. Uh, and at this work session, we shall ratify, uh, uh, decisions of ten-four, two thousand and seventeen. Okay, the application of Cornantonio, uh, location property map, assesses part thirty, lot one-ten, five Hilltop Avenue. Zone doc twenty, existing use, single-family residence, proposed use same. This is for ratification of the proposal to construct a thirty-two by thirty-two by twenty-six garage that complies with required setbacks. For an accessory structure in R twenty zone, but which would violate the fifteen-foot height limit for an accessory structure in an R twenty zone. Do I have a motion to ratify that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I have a motion to ratify the decision of ten-four, two thousand and seventeen. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Okay, uh, next one is the owner is Dennis Kuchu. Location of property map, uh, assesses map fifty-seven, lot twenty, one sixty-six acres of Pine Road. Zone is R R two, existing use is a single family. Proposal is the same. Relief requested, special use permit, expanding of a non-performing use. Uh, this is to ratify the request for a special use permit to expand a non-performing use by demolishing the existing eighteen point five feet by twenty-eight feet dwelling and replace it with a twenty-eight by thirty foot dwelling. Do I have a motion to ratify this decision?
A motion.
Okay?
Second.
Motion's been made and ratified. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Okay. Uh, next applicant, Buckland. Uh, owner, same. Uh, location of property, assesses lot map ninety-five, lot one-one-one point one, Hill Street. Zone R twenty, existing use is vacant land. Proposed use is a single-family residence. Relief request is a variance to street frontage requirements. Uh, this is a request to ratify for a variance from the road furniture required to develop the property with a single-family residence. Do I have a motion to ratify?
Make that motion.
Okay? Motion, motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Okay, next applicant is Hart. Uh, owner is the same. Uh, location of the property is fifty-five, uh, assesses plot map fifty-five, lot one-one point one. Address is six-six-one Washington Street. Zone R twenty. Existing use is a single-family residence. Proposed use is the same. Uh, relief requested is a special use permit for expansion of a non-performing use. This is ratification request for a special use permit to expand a non-performing accessory structure, a garage, that is currently located less than four feet from the side lot line. Where ten feet is required. Do I have a motion to ratify this?
I'll make that motion.
John's made it, do I have a second on it?
Second.
Okay, made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Okay, uh... Okay, we have, uh, matters continued from ten-four is, okay. Napoleone, uh, assesses plot map eighty, lot thirteen Manning Court. Zone R twenty. Existing use is a vacant lot. Proposed use is a single-family home. Purpose of application request for a front advantage. This matter comes before the zoning board to seek a dimensional variance to the zoning ordinance, lot equi-, furniture required. Part of a proposed building and a single-family home on a R twenty zone. Property in question is four thousand, two hundred and eleven-three, eleven-hundred, forty-two thousand, correction, one hundred and thirteen square feet lot. Located at the end of a sub subsection and a resisting right-of-way that functions a hundred and forty-foot extension to Manning Court. Right-of-way provides sole means for access vigorous to four lots, including this subject lot. Okay, uh... This is tough. This is a lot of record. Uh, quite a bit of testimony was given to us and, uh... Okay. I have been reminded that, uh, appendix A, right, uh, must be satisfied to grant the area and road line variance sought by the applicant. Do I have a copy of appendix A? Okay. With consideration, to grant the variance, the zoning board must determine that. The hardship from which the applicant seeks relief, okay, is due to the unique character of the land? Is not due to the general characteristics, is not due, okay. Yes? Okay, uh, I think that's a good suggestion. Mr. Cronin, I will give you a copy of appendix A because I...
For the record, Thomas Cronin, ten-seventy Main Street, Coventry Island for the applicant.
Uh, you were sworn in in the past, just covering the record, I'm just gonna ask you if you're sworn in again. You swear to tell the little truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes, I do. So, uh, just for, uh, convenience sake, we'll just take them in order, okay? As, uh, so the hardship, uh, from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics, characteristics of the land or structure. As Mr. Crowe has, uh, indicated, this is a lot of record. My client bought it in nineteen ninety-seven. It was, back then it was lot B, but it eventually became, uh, lot thirteen. It was, uh, in not, in its current configuration, which was changed in two thousand and sixteen, so that the swimming pool, uh, could be on the same lot as Mr. Napoleone's house. Uh, so the, uh, lot position, its access by the right-of-way, uh, and its, uh, frontage have not changed due to any, uh, maneuvering, for lack of a better word, by my client. The, uh, the lot is as it was originally subdivided, uh, and recorded in town hall. The, uh... So the, uh, there, the only unique characteristic with regard to this lot, uh, in otherwise regular residential piece of property, is the right-of-way. You know, other than that, it's just a regular house lot. So, the only access to this lot is by deeded right-of-way of, of the four lots in that area. Though, that's by shared deeded agreement and that was, that access was in the original deed to my client and in the deeds prior. Uh, as this area was developed by Mr. Reynolds, uh, back, uh, before his purchase, um, the...
Now, did he purchase this with his existing house lot or did he purchase this at a later date?
It was, uh, it was purchased together, lot, it was parcel A, parcel B, same day of purchase, nineteen ninety-seven.
Okay.
The, uh, so the, the, the lot, it's a lot of record, the only unique characteristics is access by the right-of-way. There's, uh, my client did not create the right-of-way or anything like that. This is the planned access to this lot. The, um, the general characteristics of the area are residential community. It's planned to be a residential, uh, lot and it's, wouldn't impair the intent of the zoning ordinance or a comprehensive plan to put a, a residential home on, on this lot as that is the, uh, intended use in R twenty. And that is also the actual practical surrounding use, residential lots of a same similar size. The relief is the leaf, the least relief necessary. This is the only access to the, to the property. There are no public streets, uh, from which this lot could be, uh, accessed. I guess the pond might, uh, offer some release in the form of a ferry. But, uh, public access road, there's no other relief. And the, uh, this is the beneficial use of this property. There's no other beneficial use of this property. It's a residential lot of record. That's the intended use to build a single-family home, which conforms to the general use of the area. If the zoning board, uh, does not grant this relief, the hardship that'll be created is that the sole beneficial use of the lot will be taken from this to Napoleone. But in summary, that's... Ms. President?
Sure.
Sure.
It's taxes as a residential lot. Yeah, as a buildable lot.
Okay, my question is on this is... Uh, it comes out to a buildable lot, but the right-of-way here, this, this is a difficult one. It's, it's a right-of-way, but everybody is using it currently now, all, all four, like you said, residents.
Uh, well, Mr. Crowe, everyone is using it.
Right.
That, that has become clear as we have developed and presented the, the application, but yes, the four unit, the four, well, three of the lots are using it right now, and this would be the fourth lot.
This would be the fourth lot.
Yeah.
Okay, now, this lot here, by going out and using it, uh, and I'm familiar with it over by Falls' Pond, uh, it appears very wet, and you do have a state-approved D E M system.
That's correct. The rear of the lot is very wet.
They have much more knowledge than I do on that. Uh, and the, and the, and the neighbors came out and spoke, you know, very concerned over, and apparently they, they should be, it's a rough area, uh, on the engineering of a structure, of a septic system, you know, not to have that, uh, I suggest that the town engineer, uh, that you would hire an engineer, then have it approved by the town engineer, uh, the whole site plan to, I don't know how you would engineer that, that's just, I don't have the expertise, before a structure was built on there.
You're speaking in regard to the zero percent net runoff, so no additional runoff?
Right. I don't know whether it needs a drainage ditch dug all the way around it, therefore, uh, you know, and that would be designed correctly so that, that water goes into the drainage ditch and not to the neighbor's house. Uh, and that's only, understanding that this is a lot of record, and, uh, like you said, I don't know what else you would do with this lot, and it was already established when Reynolds built it.
What, he purchased the property when?
Nineteen ninety-seven.
Was it already separated into two lots?
A and B, yes.
So who separated those lots?
So it had been subdivided at that time?
Who separated? Mr. Reynolds did, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Reynolds did back, uh, when they first recorded the, it wasn't a subdivision at the time, but to use the, the current terminology, a subdivision.
And the town accepted that right-of-way for access to it?
It's a, it's a deeded, shared right-of-way from, uh, two lots down, yeah, Manning Court stops being, being a public street, you know, like, before that lot. It's a, it's a...
Is there anything in the deed saying they have permission to use that right-of-way? Is there any permission given anywhere?
Yes. So, i- in each of the deeds for these lots, it says, you know, the right to pass and repass is specifically mentions the right-of-way, um, and it's, the ownership is shared, Mr. Napoleoni owns ten feet, uh, Mr. Nesbit, I believe it is now, but Mr. Lamore was the original, uh, person who created the right-of-way with Mr. Reynolds, uh, so it's a deeded, uh, shared, deeded right-of-way. And, and it, it exists now, it's not being created, uh, along with anything that we're doing here today. The, uh, it's, it's deeded to lot thirteen, to use the right-of-way, and, uh, Mr. Napoleoni owns the ten feet in front of his house, and the, you know, other people own the ten feet, but they all have deeded rights to share that right-of-way. And it's, it's been paved and improved by, and used by the town, that part, we can't really, I, I can't explain or, or speak to that, but that, that's the current configuration.
I was still trying to get a handle on, um, did your applicant reap this division, right? There was a pool, they wanted to move the line.
That's right.
So the applicant, your applicant, your, your client created the subdivision, the dug the new lot line, if I understand this correctly, they created the hardship.
That's not correct.
That's, that's wrong clarification.
Yeah. So when he purchased it, uh, back in nineteen ninety-seven, it was, uh, it was two parcels, at that time labeled parcel A and parcel B, which developed into, uh, fourteen and thirteen.
So there were two separately taxed parcels at that time?
That's correct.
Okay.
And there was additionally of, oh, I'm sorry, it was parcel B and parcel C, additionally it was parcel A, which, uh, later became, became part of the adjoining property when it was first.
So they've already been in front of, of planning, you've already been in front of planning on this?
I, I have not been, I, I was in front of planning for a recommendation. No, I was not, this is not a special use permit, this is a...
A variance.
This is a variance. So, Mr. Denofio, can I just approach one moment?
Sure.
This is a parcel after the next. This is, this is nineteen eighty-three.
There's one parcel.
This is, uh, last year on the house?
Yes.
This was a pool, this was a...
Alright, so he built this pool on the other lot?
Well, he built it.
The pool was there, the pool was there when he, the pool was there when he, when he bought it?
Right, this was nineteen eighty.
Okay.
So the lot line, the line only exists?
Right.
And it moved it, it did move it, but it didn't create it.
Well, he hasn't moved it yet, right?
It's been moved, two administrative subdivisions in two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
Ms. Presidenta, I was, uh, just showing Mr. Gray and Mr. Denofio a recorded map, um, recorded nineteen eighty and revised in nineteen eighty-three, uh, by registered land survey Alfred Hanson for Walter and Beatrice Reynolds.
It was actually inactive?
Uh, yeah, that would be about seventy-nine, and it was inactive.
So, in your testimony, who created the hardship? Who created this, this division? In your testimony, just to sum it up, you were showing me the map from nineteen eighty.
Sure.
Where you said the line was moved after that because of the pool. So who created, who created this hardship?
Uh, well, the, the land was developed on a, on a right-of-way by Walter and Beatrice Reynolds.
Well, so the hardship, but the lot didn't exist as a buildable lot until the line was moved, or was it? Was it always a buildable lot?
It was always a buildable lot.
Okay.
It had, it previously had just shy of eighty thou- eighty thousand square feet, um, but the, uh, pool, Mr. Napoleoni's pool, was not on the same lot as his residence, which is disfavored, I don't know if that's a word, but anyway, the, uh, so the, the line was pivoted, but, but the actual...
But the line was there, it was just moved.
That's right, the front, the frontage amounts did not change.
Okay.
So a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet of, a hundred and forty-one feet of frontage, where a hundred and fifty is required, was, was already there on, on the front lot line, and only the thirteen point four seven feet to the right-of-way was there at that time.
So, so the line existed, the frontage was still not right back then?
That's correct.
And in fact, moving that line really didn't affect this whole building process? This is for the pool?
Well, the only, the only thing that it affected is, I am currently short, what, about fourteen hundred square feet on an acre, I'm not, I think that was probably a mathematical error when they pivoted the line, um, rather than, I think they meant to create an acre, but they, you know, when they surveyed, it came up just short.
Okay.
So that's the only, uh, I wouldn't say nothing has changed, because I am asking, also for the lot area variance.
Now...
How long has the pool been, can you tell me how long the pool's been there?
The, uh, the map, the recorded map that I have shows it in nineteen eighty.
So when he bought the property, the pool existed?
That's right, it was in nineteen ninety-seven.
Any other questions? Uh, any other comments on it? I'm, I'm really kinda mixed up on this whole thing.
Well, just going down the list here, um, we addressed whether or not it was a result of prior action, um, let's say the address, it's not primarily, primarily motivated by desire of greater financial gain. Now, I believe the testimony was, this lot's gonna be developed and sold off.
That's correct.
So it didn't have financial gain?
It is, but that was his intended purpose. He's not creating a lot to, to build a house and sell it.
No, but to, to grant the variance, um, the hardship for which to seek relief cannot be motivated by a desire for financial gain, greater financial gain.
So my, my understanding of that would be, he would be prohibited, prohibited from creating the lot that we're here discussing today, but the, it is a house lot, it's a recorded lot. There, there's no, I mean, anyone could come along and purchase this lot and come before this board, uh, it wouldn't have to be, it doesn't have to be him because he's a next-door neighbor.
No, but that's for, for variance, that's one of the...
Right, but he's before us because he wants to build a house on that lot, which...
Well, that's undisputed, yeah, so if you, if you were to look at it that way, then that is undisputed. I, I do not look at it that way, I look at that as, uh, subdividing property so that I can get an additional lot, so I can build a house and sell it, this is already a lot.
But the, but we, but this project requires a variance in order to do that.
Yes.
And the variance is very clear, it says you cannot, um, get a variance if the relief you're seeking is primarily for a financial gain, but great, I guess the key word's gratifying to me.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't, I, I understand what you're saying, but that's not how I understood the, uh, the application of that requirement.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the third one.
The only thing I'm interested in is how is the ground on that, how is the...
I, I don't know the answer to that.
This lot was, was, was... But all of the other... But it's all...
Right.
So this is the one, uh, and so the lot, because it had an upstairs, the evening background, so the...
But it is a lot of record, see, that's why I'm still having a problem, it is a lot of record.
The town never should have accepted the right-of-way in recording the lots.
Right.
That's the problem. They would have done it correctly back then, we wouldn't have this problem. But this individual, I mean, like you just said, somebody could purchase this lot and request to build on it, and we would be denying them any beneficial use of this lot by not allowing it to build on. Right, but greater financial gain, I got a problem with that, because, uh, anybody that sold off a lot is gonna be greater financial gain.
Yeah, but, but the question, the variances do so, I mean, there's a difference between selling a lot that meets all the requirements and gains, that's the point of development. But when you have to get a variance in order to do that, that's what the point of the variance is.
Well, naturally, acreage as well, it's short on, according to your testimony, fourteen hundred, that's not so much an issue for me, that fourteen hundred square feet.
It's a tough call, because, because they, we're not, because we, we originally intend to build on that, and so not, we're not looking for greater financial gain, that was the original intent, not greater gain.
But most of those lots over there don't qualify as buildable lots, that's my problem, they never should have been accepted in the first place. I mean, the right-of-way is terrible.
It's really greater to be, you know, but...
I know, it's too late now.
Well, this is out of bounds.
But the town already approved that subdivision lot line.
Right.
And that even puts us in a tougher spot. You know, since it's already been approved, and I understand, am I correct, this would have been approved by a, um, administrative subdivision if, what, water was, if it wasn't a well, well?
No, the, the frontage, uh, obviously, I mean, it's only thirteen and a half feet of frontage, that's, even, even with public water, that's gonna be an issue. The, uh, the lot area would not have been an issue if Kent County water would have run a line, uh, over the private right-of-way. But, so that issue would have dropped, but the thirteen point five feet is, is the, you know, the width of the right-of, right-of-way was not...
It's the way it's always been.
Yeah, that's, that's what it's...
That's the way it's always been recorded as.
It's always right from when it was first recorded.
In this record, recorded, it could have been in the seventies, sixties, we don't know?
Well, the earliest map I could find is nineteen eighty.
I don't even understand that, because we had zoning in nineteen eighty, but the whole thing just doesn't make sense. Why it was ever recorded in nineteen eighty, and with the right, and with the right-of-way? None of those house lots should have been recorded. So we punish the, the last person to build? That, that's where I have a problem, I don't, I don't know.
Well, if everyone else chooses the right-of-way, they're not gonna stop, is that what you're afraid of?
Well, I mean, we let everybody else build on this right-of-way, we let everybody else, you know, there's lots of record, and all of a sudden we're gonna say, okay, you're the last one in, you're, you're screwed, you're out. I mean, I'm just gonna build. You know, I mean, I, I don't know how else to put it, I'm just...
Well, when was the last house built?
This one.
No, probably, I mean, so what year was the last one built?
I don't have that information.
I mean, you could say, uh, the last one was screwed, it could have been thirty years ago, the last one was built.
Right.
So, it's quite a time, it's a time now, so that you got screwed thirty years later.
Yeah, but this is, is, this is the last lot on the end of the...
I know, I know.
On the end of the line.
Um, I'm just trying to find a common ground here, where it makes sense, I mean, if somebody's building a house and say, you know, we're building a house for my, my son, the next door to us, you know, we want, keep the family close together, that, to me, is not greater financial gain, but if I'm just building a spec house on a piece of property so I can sell it and make some money, that's greater financial gain.
Yeah.
In my head, that's the way I'm seeing it.
Well, I think, Mr. Denofio, if he just sold the lot, and say I, say I purchased the lot, and I came before this board to build my family home.
You still need, you still need a variance.
Right, but it, it wouldn't be for any greater financial, and I'd be living there.
But that isn't the situation.
But that's not the situation here, that's not what's in front of us.
It's, it's the same situation.
No, because this is a lot that's already owned by...
It, it is.
Same people, and they, this situation's existed for quite a amount of time, this isn't something new where I bought something with the intent on buying it, thinking I could, I could build on it, but I didn't know, that's a different thing.
Right. So, he bought this house in, bought this land in nineteen ninety-seven, the, the frontage has not changed, the lot of record has not changed.
What was the intention back in nineteen ninety-seven?
There was, there was no intention.
That's my point, there was no intention.
There was no intention, one way or the other, it was just...
It was a big lot, basically, a big lot of land, right?
Well, no, it was two lots.
It was two lots, but was, was the intention back then to, to subdivide and build?
As being taxed, uh, two separate homes.
Or, well, was the intention to, was the intention back in ninety-seven to build on the second piece of land?
It was to have, it was to have it as a house lot, it's a house lot, yes.
Okay.
Is there anything that can affect you, uh, to others? Can you, 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 can
Well, yeah, I mean, no, because the, uh, the, it has a deeded right of access over the right of way, uh, presently. It, so it, it is not adequate. And, and if I extended a private right of way all the way across the front of this lot, it would also not be adequate. It, it, there's no public road here. I mean, it's, 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 they have access to a deeded right of way. It's only, you know, thirteen and a half feet across, but it leads to the right of way, which is only probably twenty something feet across. Yeah, well, I guess the, the question I agree would be, how, how would you get it out, right? But, yeah, so, I mean, I, I think some kind of condition that, uh, you know, some kind of, uh, design element, uh, for a turnaround or something like that would be a reasonable combination or a condition of approval. You know, uh, I mean, frankly, I, that's what, that's what I anticipated, uh, would be a condition of, of approval, I agree.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Within his property, he'd have to locate a, like you said, a hammerhead or a circle, like, and pave it, you know, and have it all set up for emergency access.
How do they? Um, from, I guess if you were looking at this map, they, uh, they travel southerly.
Like the drive through?
Yes. Yeah, school buses. Well, I mean, I have to, the technical review committee would, would maybe have some issues with that. But yes, it is access to drive through. It's, it's not owned by Mr. Napley. Only he doesn't have any legal right to use it. That, that doesn't stop everyone from using it. So it's a private extension of, uh, the right of way.
That's private real.
So that even, can't even, can't be considered as part of a safety route because it's, it's private property. You can't assume use of it if it belongs to somebody else. I mean, everybody does use it, but doesn't make it right.
So if that person wished to close that off with lots here or something.
But if someone subsequent was to buy that property, when they, you know, pulled the deed and, and were researching the property that they're buying, they would be under the impression that that was a private road, correct?
Right.
And if they're buying the property and that they're searching.
The, uh, the town, um, maintains the right.
Both? They, they're maintaining the right of way or the other way we're talking about? It's not part of the right of way?
Both, both. Sand it, flower it. Not that I'm aware of.
Well, right or wrong, when it was done, it would have been working. So why wouldn't it continue to work if one lost?
I don't know what to look at.
Well, well, we're talking about the thirteen and a half feet. We're not talking about that extension. You can't, you can't, as far as I'm concerned, you can't even consider that extension as part of this discussion.
I would agree with that. It's confusing because it's there.
Right.
But it doesn't abut my client's property.
No, no.
No. I s- I referenced it in my application simply because it, uh, it's present and it's part of the use and maintenance of that neighborhood and it, and because it is confusing, I, I wanted to, you know, be upfront about it. So, uh, I mean, to get back to, uh, Mr. Lackley's point, uh, you know, my client would agree to some kind of pave, you know, turnaround. If, once it expands past the thirteen and a half feet.
All right, well, that private right of way, like you said, has no bearing on this, but yet it does.
It's the, uh, it's the actual traffic pattern of the neighborhood.
The traffic pattern of the neighborhood. And, uh, but yet it has no bearing on our decision, but it, it, it should because of the traffic pattern. Uh, would the board like to take testimony from anybody in the audience at this time?
I would.
Okay, please have a seat, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Ms. Chandler.
Mr. Nesbit. Does that extension go through your property?
Uh, for one thing, I'm going to ask you, give your full name and address. Uh, Thomas Nesbit, nineteen eighty four. Okay, you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, on this board?
I do. The section that goes down from the side there goes through my property, Jacob's property. So this is a property that would be affected by that.
Okay. How did that get created?
That, we bought the ho- my house, we bought three years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And it was there.
Okay.
Nothing's in my deed as far as a right of way.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I don't consider it a right of way.
Okay.
What do you consider it?
My property.
But everybody in the neighborhood uses it?
There, there's people that use it, but I'm being navel-y. I'm not. It, they're very, there's not a lot of cars that use it. I mean, there's a couple houses down at our, our end of the street.
Mm-hmm.
They'll use it to cut through, um.
I mean, it's a safer way in and out than building up names up.
I've been trying to work with the people, but it's, it's, it's in my deed. I own that. Mr. Jacobs owns the other half because it's a weird shaped lot. It's pie shaped. I actually own frontage on, uh, Hickory. I thought it was in here, but I, it's going to take me a while to find it. It, it's an older house. It's, I mean, it goes, it goes back to the rentals.
On New England Rebound, it says nineteen seventy one.
Um, do you also have, um, right of way on Manning Court? Is that how you act with your property as well?
Yes, I own, I have half of it.
Mm-huh.
And, um, from what I've been told, um, it's probably on the other half.
Other half, okay.
But I got a question. When, I checked with the, uh, planning and zoning office as far as what determines frontage. Now, what we should use is proper documentation for it now. And I was told, uh, the tax assessment maps and the plan submitted by the applicant. Now, if you look at tax maps, it doesn't show that right of way. It only shows that right of way going down to the frontage on my side. It doesn't show the other ten feet that they're saying is part of the right of way. So I'm confused on that. I got the maps if you want to look at it.
Sure.
Flight room?
Please.
Oh, okay.
I'm right here.
Yep.
See how, it's showing the right of way on my side of the boundary?
Right.
It doesn't show it on the other side.
Well, that's because that's the map's ended.
Yep.
Where, where's the other street? Now, is it showing on his, on this one?
It's right here?
Yep.
It only shows it on my side of the boundary.
Problem is, we don't have his side. See, his side is over here. You don't have his lot. He needs his lot. He's fourteen. Thirteen. Okay, and it shows it right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what I forget, I'll just touch my, that's my lot right here.
Right here, but this is his right?
Yes.
Cause they're running in reference. I need a survey. She's right. She's technically right, but still, it shows it on his.
No, that's what, this is my lot right here. This is mine right here.
Yeah, we have an answer over here.
Yeah.
Okay, we got an answer. They're running a general guide.
I mean, no, I believe it was, I, I, I think he was, he was following these down.
I'm going to ask you to stand up a podium. Everybody can hear it on the mic. I think those are mine. This, yeah, this is mine.
Now, the frontage for the right of way, does the right of way, does it come down? I tried to get.
You have a copy of the map, don't you? Or Mr. Cronin has a copy of the map.
The deeded right of way that you're talking about, that goes down at an angle, ends at an angle? Or is it perpendicular to the sides of the right of way?
Go ahead.
Yes. But if, if you want me to use this as a guide of what I should be going by, the map isn't even correct.
Okay, you got to speak into the mic.
The map isn't even correct. That's what I'm, if this is what I'm supposed to go by.
That's a, that's a survey. That's, that's a survey.
Is that my lot? It's my lot, so we're doing. It's another, the map, if I'm going to use the map as a guide, if you look at over at, uh, lot eighty-one, look at the names on it. No, I agree.
I'm just trying to solve this problem with the residents seems quite confused. And if you want, bring the map right up here. I thought we discussed this last month. And I'm, I'm more than happy to discuss the whole map with, with the board, and I just want to make sure that. Yeah, yeah, this is.
What is approved?
Yep, and this was my land surveyor, um, and this is dated, dated on, uh, twelve thirteen, two thousand and fifteen. So this is a, yes, this is a, by a professional engineer. That's correct. Yep.
Now, this is my lot. See the name on it?
Yep.
Look at lot seventy-nine.
Yep.
Then I.
Oh, the names?
Yeah.
Oh, no, that, 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 that's, no.
What do I mean, if I'm supposed to use this as a guide?
Right, but that's only, how do I put it? That could have changed. That could be somebody else. Uh, that could be, I don't know what.
That's a totally completely different thing there. Do you want me to go by this map?
Well, I'm, I'm going by what's in here, because he didn't survey this. He didn't, he didn't survey that. That wasn't his responsibility. His survey, this is what's got to be correct. Which absolutely what he surveyed has got to be correct. If you see this incorrect, you let me know.
Let me, let me ask you something, Bob.
Yep.
I'll show you one. Isn't this a ten foot line?
Yes.
So this is a ten foot line. So this ten feet is this slot.
Right, exactly.
And then from here, um, that ten feet goes to him, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's the same thing all the way down the road.
So if you follow this all the way to the end.
Right.
Okay. This ten feet, see this spot right here?
Yep.
That falls within two ten feet. They're counting thirteen point five feet from here to here.
Right, but they're only saying it's ten point eighty-five.
No, they're not. They're saying they have thirteen point five feet of coverage, when technically this three feet is in this spot.
That's real quick. All right.
Okay. And they can beat that?
They did.
That's me.
They beat it that way.
But it's two people claiming the same three feet. Yes?
It's just like Mr. Nesbit uses, Mr.
Except for it's not on Mr. Nesbit's deed that it's a right of way, correct?
The right of way.
Yeah, he has the deed. He said he didn't.
No.
No, this is not.
No, that's just your property.
That's the other one.
Right, but the right of way for Mr., everybody on this road has to use both sides of the right of way, which is part of it, is on each of their deeds. So you've got to use both, you've got to use, you've got to use Mr. Nesbit's, uh, Mr. Ma- um.
Nesbit.
Nesbit's deeded right of way is used publicly, and so isn't right across the street. Same thing. The right of way is fifty percent of each person's, so it's, it's a public right of way which takes up both properties.
Is it maintained by the town?
Right. Maintained by the town. It's a public right of way. It's a public pass.
Well, no, it's a private pass.
Well, well, not really.
For the people that live there. Other people may be using it, but it's really a, a private deeded right of way for the people that live on Manning Court.
I disagree. I say it's a, it's a right of way for any, but if UPS comes in or somebody else comes in, they can, they can use it. It's not a matter of just the people that live there.
No, 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 I understand they can use it.
Right. That's what I'm saying, it's a right of way.
I just don't understand how it can be used in calculation for somebody else's frontage.
Right, that's what I'm trying, it's a passage, right, right.
Okay. All right.
Just like a road.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No, it's my fault. I just wanted to clarify that.
Anybody else like to speak on this application? Okay, at this time here, I'd like to have discussion by the board.
Uh, I'm going back and forth on this one. Um, on the one hand, I'm hearing testimony, this property is taxed to the owner as they build a building off. On the other hand, we're saying they can't build it. They're taxing it that way. But then I go back to the fact that the whole motivation, it sounds like this project is to sell off the land and build a house on it, which is financial gain. That's not the same as build, it's not the same thing as buying a piece of land and build a house. If I was buying a house for myself, that's not financial gain. If I have land, I'm gonna spec house, build a spec house on seller, the whole motivation is to create a financial gain. But if you flip it around the other way, the towns taxing them that way, so they can do that. So they'd be in tax to build on this piece of land, but it's not buildable.
Since he purchased it.
Right, since he purchased. So I'm going, I'm stuck in the middle on this one. That's right, I'm saying.
Has a buildable lot.
Has a buildable lot. So that's why I'm stuck in the middle. I want to build on it.
I'd say this is gonna be a hot and sore vote.
Well, if it's a vote, it's definitely a stipulation, I have a, some kind of turnaround that he's, that's not necessary, or?
Repeat that again?
A turnaround for fire vehicles, or?
If you wish to put that in as a stipulation on his land, uh, Russ, how do you feel?
Steve, yeah.
So I would like an entrance designed by the town administration. That would be my stipulation. And also, I'd like to have the lot engineered so that there's no runoff anywhere else. That's, if, if it was to be approved. That would be my. Right, and, and it had to be approved by administration. By the town planner and zoning. I would like to stipulate. My, my vote would be that way, if it's approved. Okay, but I also want the engineering on the lot.
On the drainage.
Drainage. Okay. Uh. Okay, voting on this application would be, uh, five members. Okay, John, how do you vote on this application?
Well, I'm not approved with stipulations.
Denise?
Well, did she do? You might wanna call on me, is that what it is? I'm gonna approve with stipulations.
Okay. I approve with stipulations. Jenny?
Approve.
Okay. Russ? Okay. Application is approved with stipulations. Okay. I need my notes, please.
All right, keep dropping them.
Nice try. Okay, the next application was held over from last night, was Joshua Carrera. Um, uh, location is Sessas Plot Map, uh, three twenty-one, Lot thirty-two. The address is five eighty Sisson Road. Zoned as an R five. Single-family residence. Same with the dog kennel. They have proposed use as a, existing use of single-family. Purpose of application, special use permit for the dog kennel, breed and sales. Okay. I went out, I've looked at this property, I drove by, then I went out last Friday and looked at it. I went up there. When I went up there, one of the buildings, I assume only had three dogs, as he said, but. I'll tell you the truth, the barking, just from three dogs, it was loud. I, and the applicant proposed, he wishes to have thirty adults, thirty puppies, sixty dogs. Uh, that's a lot of dogs. His experience has shown, working with four dogs. Uh. He's, uh, and he's willing to put up the higher fences. He does have the amount of land. But I feel to see where the applicant has shown that he can go from forty to sixty dogs. At this time here. Uh, and the applicant has a beautiful piece of property and has spent a lot of money. Uh, he's got drainage over there, he's got inside set up. Unless somebody on the board can explain to me differently, I really have a problem going from four to sixty.
Yeah, I was, I was, if I said, I think you were walking one of the dog stay gray dogs, I saw you out there. Beautiful dogs. Um, beautiful piece of property. I have some concerns with the numbers. Um, the two of you, and I, I know you love animals. Okay, you were walking a dog today. Okay, it's a great dog.
We look alike.
Um, yeah, there you go. Okay. Um, I have a grave concern about the number. As much as you love animals, two people, you said you have no higher health that you plan on having, you're not gonna take vacations, you're gonna dedicate your life to dogs. That's a lot. The use would go with the property. So if you guys ever sold that property, the next people come in and they got a puppy mill in there, if you approve that many dogs. It's just, I can't reconcile my head that many dogs in that piece of property. It's nice with jobs you're doing on that bond, it's just beautiful. And the whole area is beautiful. I mean, it's tranquil, it's quiet. Sixty dogs, I know it's not sixty all the time, but one time, there could be sixty dogs on that property. And to me, that's, that's a lot. I would think that if, if any, any forms of proof would have to be a stipulation, it's the number of dogs in there.
We took that last month. And we can continue.
Yeah, but we continued it.
Okay, we can do that. Okay, at this time here, I'm gonna ask you to take a seat, please.
Thank you.
Okay, okay.
Okay, I had somebody from the, yeah, please step up to the podium. Please give your full name and address.
Margaret Ferguson, eight eleven Sisson Road, Green.
Please raise your right hand. Should we, to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do. Um, I own the farm next door.
Next door.
So I have basically had a few concerns because I'm always wary of unintended consequences. And the fence thing was really important to me because I have livestock and I have cows. It's for the safety of their dogs, too. If their dogs get in with my cows, the cows are used to coyotes, they don't like four-legged ones in, in, and that's, they'll kill them. Um, and many people walk their dogs and walk on that road and ride their horses and so forth. And they're concerned. So the fence, I decided that Brian Wagner actually asked me to see if I could find an expert about fences that would be suitable for this kind of operation. So because I've been a board member of Rhode Island F C C for such a long time. And because we have law enforcement abilities there, I went to our police officer to see what he would say about this. And he said, for outdoor kennels, um, heavy gauge chain length, six feet high. But he also said that it would be much better if it was a stockade fence where they couldn't see things outside. Because dogs have a strong prey drive, so if a rabbit runs by or something, they're really inspired to get out and chase it. And if there were a, some kind of visual barricade, you know, facing the road, that would probably be a much safer application, like a stockade fence or something like that. And he also said in his comments to me that he would suggest there's clear and explicit language that allows animal, animal control access to the property at any time to inspect. I believe he's already spoken to our animal control officer about this. Um, because nobody wants any problems. And, um. My only other concern was because it is a business, um, that there might be more traffic on the road. And I really don't wanna see the road paved. And because this particular week, fourteen was closed because trees were down. Everybody was using Sisson Road as a cut through. People were driving down that road at fifty miles an hour. Last night was so horrible, I wanted to call the police. But it was Halloween and I figured they were busy. But I, you know, if that road is ever paved for any reason, you know, it's gonna be like that all the time. And I'm just concerned that with waste management, uh, Mr. Cray has said that there won't be customers coming to the kennel. So, you know, maybe there won't be a lot more traffic, but that's just a, a thing that I'm a little concerned about. So that's it. I think the fence idea that Joe had for me was, was probably a really good one, if the dogs aren't able to see out. You know, and other animals aren't able to see in. It would be safer.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the back, please step up. I'm gonna ask you to give your full name and address.
My name is Bill Gallery. I live at six thirty-seven Kahoon Road in Green.
I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but truth, not this board?
Gallery, G A L L E R Y. The way it sounds. Um, I am against this application because it's, basically it's against the comprehensive plan. It's a violation indeed in spirit of the plan, as you know. Uh, and I think in District One, R R five, there's not supposed to be any commercial or industrial activity. Um. The application, uh, uh, by the applicant, uh, to build a shed or an accessory building, um, was approved, the building went up. Um. This is that shed. Accessory building. It's at least twice the size of the house on the property. It is not a doghouse. It is not a room for pets. It's a business. It's a factory. It does not belong in Green. And I, you shouldn't even be considering this application, in my opinion. So I urge you to eject it. But since you are considering it, I have a couple of other items here. Um, I grew up next to a kennel. My father was a veterinarian. We had routinely thirty to fifty dogs at a time. The noise was incredible. Um, as any veterinarian will tell you, um, once, in a contained space, one, once one dog starts to bark, it's kinda like dominoes. It keeps on going, especially if it's the same breed. You have the same trigger. Thirty dogs, forty dogs, fifty dogs, um, uh, to, to support both of your observations would totally change the nature of the neighborhood. So I am requesting that you consider that this is not fit for the neighborhood. It will change forever the soundtrack of Sisson Road, which is perhaps one of the most bucolic rural postcards in all of state. I hope you've been there, but, um, once you go, you'll see what I mean. Or you will hear what I mean. There are, um, the dogs will be run outside probably twice a day, that's routine, uh, if you're a good breeder or, or an animal manager. Uh, outside twice a day. Thirty plus dogs outside. Dogs, dogs tend to bark when they get excited and move around. Outside twice a day, um, every day, all year long. That changes the sound signature. This, all of these barks, by the way, go across large, open pastures from a hilltop. So we're broadcasting. This is, this is an important point to be considered here. Another point that you might wanna consider is waste. I did a little math. Um, thirty dogs, based on thirty dogs, we produced about thirty-five, forty pounds of waste a day. Three hundred and sixty-five days a year. You know, that's five and a half, six tons of solid waste. What, is there a septic plan for this? Is it going to be hauled out in dumpsters? Commercial vendors, you know, coming in on the road, truck traffic like that? You know, just what's, how's that going to be handled? Um, uh, basically, uh, I, I, I feel that this is the wrong business. There shouldn't be any business, that this in particular would disturb the landscape permanently, or as long as it's in operation. And it should not be allowed, hence.
Okay, yes, young lady in the back. I'm gonna ask you to give your full name and address.
Albishisville, fifty-eight thirty-seven Flat River Road, Green, Rhode Island. F Y L V A I N.
Swit-, please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, not this board?
I do. Oh, sorry. Can you hear me? Um, I have a doggy daycare and, and I hope a kennel license in Cranston. And I also do search and rescue with the Rhode Island State Police. Um, one of my issues with this would be, I know they're saying sixty dogs total. The problem is, if you have, you know, one stud, say you have ten of the dogs, you have two studs and eight bitches. And they all have ten puppies. You're adding on an extra thirty, forty dogs, so now you're up to eighty to a hundred dogs. I disagree with it to begin with, cause it's a lot of dogs. I know, running a doggy daycare, you need more than two people. It, it's just, you can't do it with two people. You'd be going twenty-four seven, seven days a week. But my biggest problem is, it's a lot of dogs. And you can't control, you can't control sixty. You don't know, how, you know, how many, how many dogs? You do not know how many puppies a bitch is gonna have. And that's a huge problem. And if, you know, a stud, she's in heat and they get them by accident, you might have extra dogs. You might have all good intentions with sixty, but you just don't know how many dogs you're gonna have. And now you could have, you know, you end up being a puppy mill, a hundred dogs. And then you also need to get licensed with the state. I mean, they, if they're gonna have a kennel, they have to have a state. I don't even know if they, you know, asked anyone about that, but you need a state kennel license, too. So.
That's my question.
That's my question.
Yes, gentleman, blue shirt, please. Please give your full name.
My name is Eric Saint Peter, and I live at, uh, seventy Pilgrim Avenue in Coventry.
Okay. You swear to tell the whole truth and about, nothing but the truth, not this board?
I do. Uh, my concerns are, are more of a general concern. I, I, talking about going from four to sixty jo- dogs is obviously a high-volume breeder. Is that something that I want necessarily to have going on in the community? Um, it is a lot of dogs. And, uh, a lot of dogs are, right now, in shelters, looking for homes. Uh, do we need to be putting that much of volume of dogs out into the world? Now, I understand that people want puppies, people want things like that, but this is an awfully large volume breeder that they're talking about. That, and just the fact that, you know, they'll be let out two times a day. There were talk of, uh, there was talk of, uh, not allowing the people to be able to come in who are going to be purchasing the dogs. That's something that I would want if I was a person who was going to be purchasing a dog from a breeder. So not allowing that seems strange to me, along with the, the high volume of, uh, of dogs being bred. Are warning signs to me that it's just not something that I think we wanna start setting precedent. setting precedent in the state to be able to have these high-volume puppy organizations around.
Yes, young lady in the back. I'm going to ask you to give your full name and address.
Michelle Alexandra, 26 Mapledale Street, Coventry.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, not this void?
I do. Okay, my concerns are similar to the gentleman I just went, but more along the lines of what qualifications do these people have to actually breed dogs? It takes an expert knowledge of DNA, of genetics. And if they are actually going to do this to improve the breed and not just for money, then they need to know about five, six, seven generations back from the bitches that they are using to breed. They need to track who they're selling these dogs to. So when I read that they're going to be doing it online, that doesn't make sense to me. How are they tracking what happens to the puppies? Are there any genetic defects? Are they guaranteeing anything? I mean, there's hip dysplasia that runs in this breed, there's eye problems that run in this breed, there's mange that runs in this breed. How are they guaranteeing these dogs? Are there guaranteed certificates to go with each puppy? I mean, these are just major questions that any breeder that really knows his stuff would have put out there when they came to meet us. And it says to me a lot that it sounds like a puppy mill. They are breeding these dogs to sell them online, get $2,000 a puppy, without any concern for these dogs. And when it comes to, like, what type of, in each, for each individual dog that they have in there, what type of environmental enrichment are they providing? Being in a kennel all day and let out twice? No. That is not a life for a dog.
Okay, thank you. Let me just finish with the open discussion. I'm going to ask you to give your full name and address.
Good evening. Donna Restigian, and I'm at 401 Hoppe's Farm Road in Green.
I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, not this void?
I do. A couple of points I want to echo that the comp plan is not going to, is not being followed. And I encourage you to reject the application just based on the fact that it's a commercial business, and commercial business does not belong in RR5. Rural, residential, and that's it. I also want to, if you haven't checked your emails today at all, Dennis Tabello, he is the defenders, President of Defenders of Animals, has sent you a two-page email opposing this application. Just wanted to let you know about that. Also, I don't know, you're talking about maybe, you know, the animals are, you know, the recreation, feeding. There's videos on their website, on their Facebook page, of these dogs eating deer carcasses, licking the blood off of the cement. That tells me that, you know, they're giving these animals the taste of blood. I don't know if, what they're going to be, what the intention is after these animals are sold. They are going to be sold online. There's no customers coming to the, where they're breeding. They're, for all I know, they're taking this eight or nine-week-old puppy, putting it on a plane. There are, there's some people from Greece, Italy, who have bought these. So these little animals are going on a plane and then never to be seen or heard of from again. The other thing is Coventry is a kill, a high-kill shelter. You know, they're, you, we don't keep the animals for a long time. So the animals that come to the pound are euthanized. Why do we want a breeder in our town when there are animals that are adoptable? Pit bulls are, all around Rhode Island, Providence doesn't want them. They, you have to have a license or, the point is, is that it sounds like a puppy mill. It breeds like a puppy mill. I personally don't know how two people are going to do this. Whether they say they're, it's going to be 24/7, all right, so one person is up 12 hours, the other person sleeps 12 hours, the other person gets up 12 hours, that person sleeps 12 hours. So that really means that maybe one person is going to be tending to all these dogs?
We have the board to check the question. Coventry is a real shelter.
It is? Since when?
It is. That's the law. I think it's the law.
Okay. All right, so how many dogs are in the shelter right now? Is it full?
You have one.
Okay, after. One at a time.
The point is, it's an RR5. It's zoned for no commercial, no industrial. There's residents that are opposing this. And the other thing too is, online businesses, they don't have to file taxes with the Division of Taxation, because I called.
The business?
Excuse me? I called the Rhode Island, State of Rhode Island Division of Taxation. And because it's an online business, they do not have to pay sales tax, which means I don't believe that Coventry gets any, whatever. The only thing that Coventry is going to get is tangible taxes.
From shrubbery, are you planning on?
There are going to be, um, abreviations which grow in the winter. They're one of the only things that actually keep growing in the winter. And the visual, um, the building is 120 feet. That's going to create a huge barrier between any sight of my dog. So the building itself works at a, as a great barrier. Um, uh, the shrubs that come off it are really are to complete it towards the property line. Just so, um, it just cuts out the ability for people to see in and for my dogs, as they stated, to see out, um.
Okay, and currently, um, there are, I'm sorry. The Chief of Police of Warren said nine dogs. I've heard 14.
Nine dogs were at the property that he visited.
Me and Warren.
At that time, yes, correct.
Do you currently still own those dogs?
Yes, we own 14 total.
You own 14 total?
Yes.
Where are those dogs?
Some of them are at the property and we've been doing our best to rotate just to keep, um, from anybody complaining about dogs. So my parents and her parents, um, offer some help, uh, with that in the meantime.
So 14 dogs, um, is it standard that it's three do- over three dogs requires a kennel license in each town?
Yes, um, we're prevented from actually licensing our dogs because they won't do it unless we get the kennel license.
But you have more than three at each place where these dogs are?
Yes, and I was given permission by the Supervisor of Warren Animal Control to keep those dogs there until a certain date, um, residing. Um, I did mention to him that I still own a property there. My mom does, my grandmother also does, we're all in the same area, um, that they would still be visiting. He had no issue with that as long as they're not residing there.
Okay, so it wasn't the dogs needed to be out of the town of Warren in May? Cause it says here.
They needed to be not residing at 27 Vernon Street, which they don't anymore.
Okay, I think that's it for now for me.
Um, ju- uh, two things, um, just regarding the issue of, uh, commercial buildings. Um, and there was some talk about the, um, comprehensive plan. Um, with the special use permit that we're requesting, um, dog breeding is permitted, um, in, in this particular district. Um, Mr. Crea also went to, uh, the West Coventry Fire District, um, just, uh, a couple of days ago. And received a letter, um, that hasn't been presented to the board, but I'd like to present, uh, to the board tonight. That essentially says that the, uh, Coventry Fire District, um, they went out, they, they made a determination that the building does fall into storage. And that there are no special requirements, uh, fire alarm systems, sprinkler systems at this time, uh, for the building under the current proposed use of the dog kennel. I know back in October, we were just talking about whether or not there were any requirements for sprinkler systems or, or anything like that. So he received a letter from, um, the Coventry Fire District that those requirements are not, uh, applicable here.
Um, as a follow-up to that question, um, our animal control officer did indicate that she has not been presented with an evacuation plan. 20 dogs are hard to place, 20 American Bulldogs are hard to place, um, as well, whatever they are. Um, cause we don't agree on that, but, um, so 20 dogs are really hard to place.
Um, Mr. Crea, um, actually had a conversation and I'll, I'll let him address that with the animal control officer who went to the property today regarding the evacuation plan. Um, the animal control officer indicated that their evacuation plan for the, uh, Coventry Kennel, um, is to place the dogs, um, at URI during state of an emergency, which is open to the public. And Mr. Crea would defer to, um, the Coventry Animal Control, uh, disaster plan, but I'll let him speak to that.
Okay, but I'd like to hear about transport too, if you can. Cause if there's 20 dogs.
Okay, I would have to hire someone to do that or pay for a boarding facility or the option of URI as is open to the public. Those are all evacuation plans, um.
But this is an emergency, it's an emergent situation. And we did have a situation in the town, I know you have nothing to do with that. We're a building caught fire and there were dogs, um, that were in the house, were dogs that are on the property. That presents a very serious situation and an emergency evacuation plan, I don't think is the ti- like, that has to be in place. You have to know where these dogs are going ahead of time because you've got to place a lot of dogs pretty quickly. And by your own testimony, an unknown number of dogs.
We do have, uh, a kennel we could, uh, board them at, which, um, we're familiar with. And, um, my girlfriend has been, uh, friends with the owner for a while. Um, it's in, it's in midfield.
How are you getting 20 dogs off the property?
I own vehicles ma'am, and, um, I also own vehicles in different locations.
The transport vehicle?
Correct. I'd like to add as well that although the fire department didn't require anything, I, I'm still going to put a smoke detector and something in there for my own good and as well as the animals. And also fire extinguishers, I think that's very important. Although it's not required, I feel like, uh, it's something that we should do and I, I feel like, uh, it's the right thing to do.
Okay, do you have any, does any other board member have any, uh, questions?
So I wanted, you know, to discuss among the board some points.
Oh, yes, yes. Thank you for coming by.
Microphone, James.
They can't hear you.
Kenny, microphone?
Yep.
No. Hello, okay. Usually I don't need a mic, I can vell up. Um, yeah, when we drove in, um, there were four beautiful, absolutely gorgeous dogs. Uh, having a great time running around. Now, are those the male? Um, are they mixed?
A male and three females at that time when you approached the property.
Now, when we drove in, um, the garage on the right-hand side, there were dogs barking in there. I couldn't peek in because the windows were blocked.
Uh, some of them are blocked, that's so that the dogs won't bark when people pull in the driveway. Normally they don't, I think at the time she was swapping them out, so you may have heard some barking at that time. I, I'm sorry about that.
Now, were they large, like the other?
Typically they're, they're large breed animals, yes.
They looked a lot larger than any pit bull I've ever seen.
That's because they're not.
Yeah. All right, now, how about the fire? You had a fire going one night and people up there thought that your house was on fire?
No ma'am, I don't recall anything like that happening, I'm sorry.
I just wondered, you know, where and what it was, if it was in the fire thing that you have in the backyard.
I don't recall that event.
No?
No, I do have a fire pit, maybe I was roasted. Yeah, I may have roasted some marshmallows out there a few times, if that's what you're speaking of. I've never had any, uh, buddy concerned about whether the house was on fire.
I didn't know if you were burning, you know, things.
Yeah, some wood, cardboard.
From the building or something, yeah. But they said it was so, so large. Well, I guess not.
Thanks for coming by ma'am.
Beautiful, okay, this time here I look at you take a seat.
Thank you.
Okay, um.
Mr. Chair, um, before the board begins the discussion, sort of type of tense, and I want to, uh, the board.
Please.
First of all, I heard a number of comments relating to the comprehensive plan. Mark, you know, the coordinator, many of the people, I think, commented that the work of the community, the community, the zone. Um, the product is not adequate, the zoning ordinance behind the law, providing a different commercial use. Uh, commercial use, depending on what, well, the, the, the law counts, which are not a type of, uh, uh, in some being comprehensive, some in law states, there's some that are. Any resistance to, to the zoning ordinance, even the non-zoning ordinance in comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance control. In this case, the town council without the zoning ordinance, not only for, uh, the law, but the zone, I'm saying, the new project. So I would strongly urge the board, considering this application, to focus on the criteria for the specific duty permit. Do not base its decision on the comprehensive plan. So in town, this could be had, the zoning ordinance could be revoked, which is forced down the decision. It's a fully on the comprehensive plan, not based on the applicable zoning criteria. The second thing I would like to point out for the, um, the board, we said, at page five and six, top page six of the statute court. Considering including the number of situations, which, which the board feels themselves in, we're not, uh, subject to comment. In this case, if they might want to consider invoking on this property, uh, based on the conversation here tonight. I did add, the list is just there, uh, they will bring in from out there, uh, this area. Uh, we also had a different use, such a use permit to expire upon the sale of the property. And in the last quarter, I am, and there, I suggest the stipulation to acquire, the development, the mission of an operational plan for help. Uh, we had suggestions already there, evacuation plan, and, and, uh, probably, uh, uh, the board, uh, first. And to, uh, to the, uh, to the, uh.
That would be, that's four, that is four, uh, defense, special use, then expires, fire safety, evacuation plan, uh, what was it? Six months, what one rather?
There's, there's quite good more than four, five.
Yeah, they're all bullet points.
That's what I'm saying, but I'm just trying to, okay. No outdoor kennel?
Liability insurance, uh, it is the board prerogative to set numbers for the dollar. Um, and the board is aware that, um, that there is nothing that the applicant can come back on a later date. Uh, for expansion of the numbers as long as, as part of, of the, they've demonstrated their ability to, um, operate the kennel and the criteria as far as they have. and the criteria they have, they're using it to fund the pay for, um, for this kind of dog. Three, which we, uh, have a number, which accounts for the number of puppies. If you send a number of puppies, it's gonna have to be extra parts, which if you doesn't have the longest delivery, it's gonna be over that, that thing, and it's gonna violate the, uh-
Okay. I agree.
Didn't he testify last time he has a septic system for that actual building? So there, so there's drains in there and- It's for the actual building?
Okay, um, I'm sure if you want to start, start with the standards, I'll do my thing, sure. The standards, okay.
Okay, um, so among the board discussion here, going through the standards required in granting a special use permit. Um, the biggest concerns I have regard standard I, which and K, so south I. I think Brian addressed J on the confidence plan, so it kind of cleared my head of that one. Um, the use will not result in or create conditions that will exceed the industrial performance standards in Article Seven. So if you go to Article Seven, it talks about, um, standards on noise levels and to have, um, you know, some kind of experts, consultants, to testimony as to the noise levels that these dogs would create. And there are specifically a couple of tables there that talk about maximum permitted noise levels, um, for night and day. We have no testimony on that whatsoever. Um, so that's a concern, you know, will it meet the industrial performance standards regarding noise? Um, I think if there's any, if there's any kind of contingency on the amount of dogs, that should be taken into consideration. Just how much noise we put out by the amount of dogs. Um, on K, that the granting will not result in conditions inimical to the public health, safety, morals, and welfare. Well, there are already concerns. I mean, if you're living in fear situations, that's your, your, your health. Um, that's a health issue. So again, any kind of stipulations put on this has to address that. You know, the concerns of people that have a fear, these are big dogs and they may be understood or misunderstood as to what they really are, but there are real concerns from the neighbors as to what these dogs will be. Um, I think we can all agree right now that sixty is not gonna happen. It's just not gonna happen. There's no way I would ever approve sixty dogs. So, I just want, those are my three, those two points, I E K specifically I'm concerned about. I'd like to have feedback from the rest of the board members on that.
Um, I have a question about the, the noise part of it. Um, how is that gonna be measured? Because my understanding from other issues in town, um, is that the police department does not possess something that can measure certain levels of noise.
Well, they do.
No, um, with regard to one of the issues, um, on industrial plants, we were told that, um, there isn't a device that's gonna measure the actual decibels. They have it only for like, um, like an outdoor music place, but they, certain things they can't measure. And my concern is that, you know, for both parties, for both, the people who are upset about the noise level and for the applicant who's, you know, has the right to know what that level is. If he's below the level, he shouldn't be getting in trouble. But if he's above the level and it bothers them to the neighbors, they should have the right to assert that. So I just want to make sure that we have something that would accurately measure the noise level with regard to barking dog. Right. That's my concern. I, and again, it's a concern on both ends. Because you don't want someone to get in trouble and be falsely, you know, accused of having something above a certain level. But you also have to consider the rights of the people who live around that property.
And that's my point, there's no testimony from any experts as to what the noise level should be. Um, I guess until we set a limit, we wouldn't know how to measure that.
Alright. Uh, Frank, what's your opinion on this topic, please?
Fire department said that lights-
Most, for once, not on them.
I hate to say it, we know that. Um, my concern was, even though the fire department did send a letter saying that, uh, the state fire marshal wanted to, uh, the reason is the storage was, um, the fact that you have such a lot of children, uh, for, there were two months of, of, uh, fire protection, uh, really, you know, if you see the, saving the, and then saving the property because the fire department was forming a huge, uh, the potential, got lodged at the fire, uh, I don't think there would be a law to, uh, to instruct it, or, um, if this happened, it would affect the, the, uh, and, 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 uh, but he's always said he's gonna take care of that, and that's a good thing. They've had a, uh, fire down, more than ten. Uh, we saw that inside, so he's gonna ask for, you know, in the event, uh, if you actually see, when the, uh, the power of the some places still on the park, and, uh, fire services, we're trying to make sure it's allowed to come on. Um, I'm very concerned with the number of dogs, that, that seems, um, uh, if the only, if, if the matter's open, it's, it's what it's being, uh, and it's a lot more time to figure out, uh, uh, uh. And I invite the chairman to-
Okay, uh, Jane?
It sounds like he's trying to accommodate any, anything in the, in your, uh, evacuation plan and all the other things in place, but the number of dogs that you're going to be keeping there is a big concern.
Did he grab anything else you wanted to add?
I'm afraid so. I wondered about the fence, six, six-foot fence. I wondered if that would be, uh-
No, he agreed to increase the fence to eight feet.
High enough.
I think he agreed to increase the fence to eight feet. That's much more. Okay, Vince?
Uh, I am concerned about the number of dogs. I, I think thirty is, thirty adult dogs is way too many. Um, I'm not exactly, um, thrilled about the suggestion of twenty either. Um, uh, we have not had any kind of, uh, there's a gentleman that talked about the amount of waste. Uh, he did the calculations and five and a half to six tons of waste from these animals. Um, we really haven't had any, uh, plan submitted as to how all of this, how, how do you, how do you take care of five and a half to six tons of waste in your, in your private garbage-
Yeah, that's my concern.
-bin?
Uh huh. Uh, that's the natural, um, that's, you know, the legal diet, uh, the law diet actually means that ten percent of natural dogs that are in siddles, you know?
Uh huh, okay.
So anything or any number that an adult dog, with natural produce, or whatever, is starting to tend to tend to the family, the federal diet. And the reason for that is to take a small natural diet, in order to be able to absorb organs and everything that is fed. Rather than siddles that are in siddles, which is get passed through the body, you just got a big lump or something in there. That's not how it is. These actually have, like, you see, for the size of the dog that we have, we really-
Yeah, that's-
I mean, it's like a, it's like a little Easter egg, it comes out. It's, uh, it's the fact that it's significantly less, I, I would say ten percent of what an actual adult would produce, um, on a, uh-
Okay.
Okay.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you. Um, mostly I'm concerned about the number of dogs. Uh, I'm concerned about, I want to make sure the fence is high enough um, to protect anybody in the area. Um, the, um, uh, stipulations that, um, have been suggested about, uh, you know, no outdoor kenneling, uh, no overnight boarding of non-resident animals, uh, no commercial grooming operations, um, you know, dogs being outside with on, without onsite supervision is prohibited. Uh, I agree with all of these stipulations that, that Brian has come up with. Um, so, um, you know, as far as it being a business, um, there are other businesses out there. They, they're not dog breeding businesses, you know, they're, they're, um, they're farmers and farm stands, which is a business. There's horse breeding, which is a business. So, um, you know, this is, you know, if, if, if he were gonna have, you know, thirty, um, uh, bechard frisees, I don't think, you know, there would be the, uh, concern that there is with thirty, um, bully dogs. But, um, I'm, I'm not, yeah, I'm not in favor of thirty adult dogs plus the number of puppies could be produced. Um, and I, I'm not actually particularly fond of the idea of twenty, but-
What do you have in your mind for number?
Of the adult dogs?
For the adult dogs?
I, I, I have in mind the fourteen he has right now.
That's for mine, my head is fourteen.
You know, and then no more than, you know, no more than twenty, maybe twenty-five puppies at a time, but-
At a time, or for a year?
For the year.
For a season, whatever.
Yeah, for-
At a time.
Please. I agree with you.
Okay, summarize this up. This is a special use permit that is provided in zoning law. It is here, it is here correctly. If this application were to be approved, there was eighteen stipulations that our administrative board would, the zoning board would request from the administration. The individual wishes to put this application up as a attorney's post to. I have no evidence presented as to his background, capability, or anything else. We have absolutely nothing. We have something from Warren that, you know, dogs, but there's no dogs licensed out there, there's no, you know, there's nothing out there. I just feel that all the questions that our solicitor just mentioned are from a lack of experience. I just, I just, at this time, I don't believe, uh, this would be, I mean, I went out there, I don't know how many dogs you had in that little garage, but it was barking all day long. And, uh, I, I, you know. So at this time here, I'd like to call for a roll call vote on this application. If it is to be approved, if the individual votes to approve, it would be with the eighteen stipulations administered by our solicitor and, uh.
What stipulation do you want us to go?
Well, eighteen of them, just all kinds of them, I mean.
No, we're, we're the amount of dogs.
Oh, the amount of dogs. Uh, I disagree with the twenty because then you're gonna have another twenty babies, uh, that's my opinion.
Correct, so what's?
So, I, I, I don't think he's got the, uh, I, I'd say, I hate to say it, I'd say seven dogs, I hate to say it because that's all he's got, uh, he doesn't have experience on that. I'd rather see somebody that's worked on something, had it something, but as presented, I'm, I'm not, I'm not ready to prove any dogs. That's how I feel. Well, I've heard enough evidence here, I'll, I'll put a vote on it whether this board would like to vote on it tonight.
I, I'm gonna make an actual vote on it.
But this is up to the applicant to provide us, not, it's not up to us to tell him what to do. This is up to the applicant to come forward and say, I'm, like you said tonight, he wants to do twenty adults, and he's gonna do waste. I mean, this is up to the applicant to, this is how it's presented, and I feel that the board has an obligation to vote on what is presented and how it was presented. And like you said, point blankly. Right, well, if, if, if it's approved.
So I think there's, there's not clarity on stipulations at this point in time. Um, we have a list from Brian.
Oh, we got a list from Brian, and, uh, I counted them up.
But the way that list is created is stuff for the board to fill in, fill in the blanks, the way the list is set up.
But I think what Bob is trying to say is the burden is on the applicant to answer those questions upfront, and the application as presented is inadequate.
Right, and we're saying that the vote would not be approved as presented, but approved stipulations. That's what we normally do with stipulations.
I'm looking for professionals.
Mm-hmm.
But we've already given this to you.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with Bob.
Yeah, I agree with Bob, that, that's.
So I, I, I'm asking a question, is that what you're talking about?
No, he's not talking about that.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm getting too many in my ear now. All right, okay, so. I, 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 I would like to have a motion on the floor that we vote on this tonight.
Again, I'm not sure what we're voting on, what are the stipulations we're voting on?
Uh, it would be the, oh, okay, I'll read them off.
Okay, please.
Okay, you got the, um, the fencer, the eight-foot solid fencer, all right? The permit would expire upon the, uh, sale or, uh, use being, uh, no longer there. The permitted use does not go with the property. Uh, fire, safety, and evacuation plan, all right? Also, the number of, the number of dogs, uh, I understand the applicant wishes to have twenty dogs, and so therefore you're gonna have at least, I don't know, twenty, are you talking forty dogs?
The stipulation says twenty, I think.
Twenty, well, twenty adults, and he leaves the pups, so you got a total of forty dogs at least. Okay, um, outdoor kennel is prohibited, daycare, overnight boarding is prohibited with non-residential animals. Martial grooming operation is prohibited, dogs being outside without an onsite supervision is prohibited. All right, noise complaints must be monitored, and, uh, I would like to see also with the noise complaint, supervision quarterly by our animal control officer inspection. A quarterly inspection by our animal control officer. Auto, uh, complaints must be monitored, and very important is loose animals, all right, monitored. Supervision of the premises, I wanna see a site plan, uh, not an operation plan, on how this is to be, who's to be on site, and a complete operation, uh, SOP, as the chief would call it. Standard operation procedure submitted to the, uh, administration and, uh, the, uh, dog, uh, animal sa- safety officer. Animal health, I mean, that's, again, uh, reports quarterly, and facility maintenance, again, that would be under our animal enforcement officer. Did I miss anything?
Yeah, liability insurance.
I was gonna say it's gonna need at least a minimum of over a million, a million dollars liability.
Bob, those inspections, are those unannounced inspections or scheduled inspections?
Well, I want, no, I want quarterly inspections, that means four times a year, by our animal, uh, control officers.
Right, but I'm asking if they're scheduled or if they're unannounced?
Uh, I will let her make that decision, I think that'd be something. Brian, was there anything else you'd like to add to this?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if we're gonna call for a vote, I'd like to read into the record the requirements of special use permit to approve this.
Yes.
Okay? Can we do that now or?
Please.
Okay. Um, if put to a vote tonight, uh, the vote for approval would state that in granting the special use permit, um, we're satisfied on these following standards. Um, A, ingress and egress to the lot and to existing proposed structures thereon. Um, with particular reference to automotive and pedestrian safety and convenience, traffic flow and control, and access in case of fire, emergency catastrophe. You can just copy from there. Would be easier if I just. Okay, um, safety and convenience, traffic flow, and control, and access in case of fire, emergency, and for catastrophe. So that's all under standard A. Standard B is regards to off-street parking and loading areas, um, we're saying they're gonna be all requirements under the ordinance for off-street parking and loading. Um, standard C is in regard to trash, storage, and delivery areas, um, we're stating that they are in compliance. D would be utilities with references to locations, availability, and compatibility. E is in regard to screening and buffering, we've had some conversation on that. Um, F would be in regards to signage and exterior lighting, um, with reference to glare, traffic safety, and the economic effect on, and compatibility in harmony with lots in the zoning district. G is in reference to required yards and open space. H is in regards to general compatibility with lots in the same or budding zones in the district. I is in regards to the use will not result in or create conditions that will exceed the industrial performance standards, Nautical Seven, and that's in reference, for me in particular, to the noise standard. J is, uh, it's, it's a general compatibility, general compatibility with the commentary comprehensive plan, and K, that the granting will not result in conditions inimical to the public health, safety, morals, and welfare. So a vote for approval with stipulations to say the board feels these standards have been satisfied.
Correct.
Okay, I'm gonna put, uh, I need a motion on the floor, we vote on this tonight, some.
They said twenty was a.
He said twenty.
Twenty adults, and it'd be twenty, uh.
You have fourteen now, but the testimony was twenty, was the.
Twenty adults and twenty puppies.
Well, it's hard because of how big the litters are gonna be.
Uh, you want it, you want it, you wanna put in fifty?
No.
Oh, okay, I need, I need a number, I need a number.
Twenty-one or twenty-two or twenty-three.
I need a number, what's the number? From the board, I need a number now. Well, come on, whoop it up.
No, at least twenty, if he has more than twenty, well.
Twenty adults, twenty puppies, forty, is that what you're doing, no?
No, no, oh, twenty, twenty, yeah, yeah, all right, go ahead.
Any other discussion on the number of puppies? Okay, do I have a motion, we vote on this tonight?
I made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brian, would you like to add to this?
The stipulations that you stated.
Yes, we're doing that a million dollar. As a stipulation, we got a million dollar liability policy, or more, if the board feels we need more than a million, you let me know. No, I have twenty, twenty adult dogs, twenty puppies. Right, but he questioned twenty tonight, so I'm gonna leave it on here and request. Unless the board wants to change, and the board wanna change this to fourteen. I don't hear anybody saying. Okay, you'd like to leave it at fourteen, anybody else?
We have fourteen.
Fourteen?
They have now.
So fourteen adults, and you want four, twenty, thirty, twenty puppies, that's a good start, I need a total number, thirty-five? Well, I, you know, I, I need, I need a maximum total, I can't be playing around with it.
Bob, given the fact that you can't predict how many puppies a litter, you know, it's gonna be, would it, would it be?
Oh, I need a maximum.
No, but would it be more prudent to limit the number of litters per year?
I'm not gonna go out and count litters.
But with ten puppies, it doesn't exceed the twenty, I mean, he, he testified, I think, that the maximum number would be like nineteen in one litter, that would limit him to one litter per year.
That's right, so it's by the number.
Right, because she's gonna know if her dog is pregnant.
So I'm saying a maximum of thirty-five dogs, am I correct?
Yep.
Thirty-five dogs, yeah. Okay, do I have a motion, we vote on this tonight?
You already did, I think, down there somewhere.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay, who's second in motion? Do I have a second on the?
To vote tonight, I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Maximum number of thirty-five dogs. One term.
We can't hear, they can't hear.
Solid eight-foot high fence, with a underline, so you can't dig underneath it. The entire area that he has outlined. Has outlined everything. None. Yes, of course. Quarter. Yes, and I also want if.
Bob.
If it's not maintained, the license will be.
So that fire evacuation plan would include transportation of the animals?
I think it needs to also address the transportation once the puppies are, I mean, there has to be some kind of a plan, correct, as to how those puppies are transported? No, they're not picking them up because he said no one's coming to the property, he, I think he said in October he was delivering them.
Any deviation from any of this will result in the, uh, kennel license being revoked. Being revoked, that's it, I'm sorry. Anybody else have anything to add to that? Okay, I have a second, and we vote on this tonight, all those in favor say aye.
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 Nays? Ayes, aye. All right, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Uh, John, how do you vote on this application?
Um, I'm going to reject, I don't feel the standards have been met, all standards.
Did he?
Um, based on the fact that we've had no expert testimony addressing the noise levels generated by this number of dogs, and that there's no testimony that this is compatible with lots in the, in the, in the neighboring area, and I'm not satisfied that the granting of this permit will not result in conditions inimical to the public health, safety, morals, and welfare, I'm rejecting this application.
Okay, the chair also rejects this application due to safety, lack of professionalism, uh, issues, and the other reasons we discussed. Ginny, how do you vote?
Reject.
Um, Jean, I'm sorry, Russ. Reject. Okay, applications reject as presented. We're gonna take a five-minute break.
Oh, no. Yeah.
Yeah, I can't move the application.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is it.
I think so, that's what we have it.
I just wanna make sure because I don't see anything about...
Okay, where's Russ?
This is us.
I don't know.
Yeah.
So putting out a fire?
No, no.
He shot me in the neck.
No.
Well, she didn't get any. And those are the... We only have five thousand. I don't know if either mine or yours.
I'm sitting, I don't know.
Fifty-seven-four.
These are mine.
No.
It's lot four, unit forty-two. Did you present notice last month?
No, what happened was, um, I, I re-noticed, uh, all the abutters because I added to the application, um, for a dimensional variance because in, in talking to the planner, um, they're now considering the shoreline of, uh, Flat River to be the, whatever you wanna call it, either your front, front lot or your back lot. And so, the original notice that I had sent out did not have the dimensional variance, so in order to get it, I, in order for you to approve it, I have to ask for it. So I redid the application with the new dimensional variance and re-noticed everybody with the proper notice and then left it at, um, ten new applications at the zoning law. So in front of you should be an application that, that asks for a special use permit and a dimensional variance.
Are you gonna give testimony on this?
I am.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Thank you very much. Tell us what you wanna do.
This is, uh, the application, well, what the project entails is, um, there's a two-bedroom dwelling there now that's in deplorable condition. Uh, what my, what the applicants wanna do is, uh, to demolish that existing dwelling, uh, construct a two-story, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, single-family residence. Um, the approximate total square footage would be about twelve-hundred-and-sixty square feet. Um, they have well water now. They've got an application into depreet engineering, uh, for a repair of the existing, uh, individual septic system. Um, we had gone to planning and planning gave a favorable recommendation for this, uh, a couple of months ago. Um, and it has also gone through and been, uh, approved by the condominium covenants committee, and I think I've explained what their function is. They're the Flat River's mini zoning board. They're the people, um, where the applicant applies to them first with plans, site plan and what have you, and then they approve it, they notify the neighbors. The neighbors are then in, approve it or, or if things have to be changed, um, either the house made smaller, the house been moved around or whatever. And in this particular situation, they did move the house from where the original house was on recommendation from the surveyor because of the overhead, uh, electrical wires. Um, they wanted a, a more comfortable, uh, range away from the wires. So the house isn't gonna be exactly where the demolished house is now. It's gonna be skewed a little, a little more up to the pond. And on the dimensional variance side of it, um, the zoning ordinance has section eight ninety, which is, um, non-conforming lots of record building setback requirements in residential zones. And they say in that that the minimum depth of the lot, up to one-hundred-and-twenty feet in an RR-two zone, which is, which is what we have, the minimum front yard setback is twenty-five feet and the minimum rear yard setback is, is thirty feet. And then it goes up proportionately. Um, if it's up to one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet, one-twenty-six to one-fifty. And when I looked at the, the site plan, um, his, his lot depth is a hundred-and-thirty-five feet on one side and it looks like it's, um, it looks, it looks like it's about a hundred-and-fifty feet on the other side. Because I think for relief, he needs about eighteen feet. Right, that's, that's... Right, that's what's confusing to me. In other words, I, I know all the lots in there, all of them are non-conforming. All the individual, what we call occupational boundaries, they're all non-conforming lots in an RR-two zone, so I, I... Right, so I guess from this point forward, we're gonna have to use that rule of thumb that any, because I, I looked at, at, well, I think all the lots, sixty-five percent of the lots on the entire pond, uh, don't have the required setbacks. They, they just don't. Everybody, you know, wants to be as close to the water as they can, so. So I, I guess for the, for the dimensional variant, I think so far as the special use variance is concerned, if we go through all of the factors, A through, through K, uh, it has ingress and egress, there's off-street parking, we have a dumpster service there, um, the utilities are already in place. Screening and buffering, um, that, that basically is just the natural overgrowth of, of the, uh, signs. There won't be any. Required yards and other open space, I think that's where the dimensional variance would come through. General compatibility, it's residential, it remains residential. Um, it's comparable, uh, it has compatibility with the Coventry Comprehensive Plan. The industrial standard, I don't think that applies to this. Uh, the granting will not result in conditions inimical to the public health, safety, welfare and morals. I think, I think that's a given. So this is one of your basic, uh, uh, tear downs and buildups, um, on the point.
Okay, so I see that the, uh, Flat River Condo Association has approved your building plans.
Yes.
Okay, so they're obviously in, in favor of this...
Yes.
In this project.
If they weren't in favor, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't have stamped them.
Yeah.
Now, this is the first step. Everything is wrung out with these kinds of projects through the covenants committee because that's, that's, those are the people that talk to the neighbors. If anybody has any concerns, if they have concerns, they're fairly, um, comprehensive. They just don't rubber stamp things to rubber stamp them.
Right.
So I've, I've faith in them.
Do they, do they kinda hash this all out?
Oh, yeah.
Like...
Yes.
Amongst themselves before you ever get here?
Yeah, I, I, well, let me, let me, let me draw your attention to the plan, the, the site plan. Plan showing proposed foundation location, you see it? Then underneath it says applicant Stephen and Mary Ann Walsh. And look at the revision dates.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four. They revised the, the, the plan four times so that the, and the covenants committee had a hand in it. Two of those revisions were from the surveyor and two of those revisions were from the covenants committee because he actually wanted to put a garage. He wanted to add a garage to this thing and the, uh, the covenants committee, I think, frowned on it because it was, now it started to get, it just started to get overgrown.
Take up a lot of the area.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they go through this with a fine tooth comb.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, Brian? Oh, it doesn't have room in the front. Yeah, yeah. If, if you look at the, the site plan, you see the, where the front of the house is, those lot lines don't even exist. Uh, we call them, uh, we started to call them occupational boundaries. When he bought this, or when, when this was...